We have a full board here?
We do.
Okay, first, we have some minutes. Is it, there's no copy? Please. Okay. Has everybody had a chance to review these?
Yep.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the May... 24th minutes as written.
Do we have a second?
He wasn't there.
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is this our first meeting since we've been back from COVID? First one you've been to, first one Nita's been to. So you...
In person.
In person, correct.
I see we have Dakota online.
We have who online?
Dakota.
Well, let me just introduce everybody then before we go too much further. Lillian Camus. And we have Jason Smigle to my left. Bob Sheehan to my right. And Nita Abbott to my right, new member.
Oh, chair is Jim Trompke.
And chair, Jim Trompke.
And Ken Clumey, our consultant.
Thank you. A little rusty, it's been a while since we've all been together.
Yeah.
Doing this, so. Welcome back, everybody. It's good to have everybody present in a meeting. Okay. Next on the agenda...
Jena.
Oh, invoices. We can skip right over that, can't we? Okay. Has everybody looked at this invoice? Had a chance to review it?
I have not.
Pioneer, this is from Ken. For services, the Pioneer Valley Commission to the town of Granby. Period covering April 1st through June 30th, 2021. Direct labor was 702.58. Direct cost, 851... Indirect cost, I'm sorry. 851.53 for a total of 1,554.11. We've had New Logo Road. Is this all for New Logo Road?
No, he's got... There's a breakdown. On the last page.
Oh, here we go, okay. 8 West State Street and 121 West State Street.
And the rest of the...
The amendments for zoning.
And...
Yep. Okay, so that's... I'll pass this around if anybody wants to review it.
And just so that everybody knows, our contract with Ken is for $7,500. Ends the end of this June. And this, including this invoice, we spent $7,486.43. That leaves us an excess of $13.57.
Oh, cut that one close.
End time, which is what, two seconds?
It's gonna be built out on this meeting. We're gonna end up in the red.
Tom, you want this?
Oh, well...
That's just my copy.
Okay, no, I'm also, thank you.
And remember saying that?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion... I'll make a motion to approve the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission invoice number four. Dated June 24th, 2021 for the amount of $1,054.11.
That's the one that needs to be submitted.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Okay. Let's jump... Well, we've got to schedule a workshop, but let's talk about that afterwards. Let's jump to old business. And let's start with... 8 West Street? Is that you?
Sure.
West State, West State Street, sorry. So, we have a waiver in hand asking us to waive Ed Oz. Please be advised that I am requesting on behalf of the owners of Ed Oz Manufacturing Representatives, Inc., a waiver of special permit SBA planning board. And then it cites several sections of the town zoning bylaws. Before we get, before Ed gets into this, we discussed this at our last, I believe at our last meeting. And I think, I think the board was generally in, in favor of waiving it prior to this letter coming out based on... It was originally approved for the full two, for the full building when they only put up half. And the, the area or the section that they plan on adding would still only be a quarter of what was originally approved. And there would, and the stormwater calcs are still less than the original design. And there's, and they're not adding any impervious area based on they're replacing part, they're replacing paving with, with that building, a portion of the building. So I just wanted to remind everybody of that conversation. And now I'll ask Mr. Chaplin to...
I don't need to come up here, so everybody in the world can hear you.
Hi, maybe I will chaplain, surveyor for the developer and Oz. West State Street. Basically, we started this project probably about maybe a year and a half, two years ago. Through, through unforeseen issues between COVID and stuff like that, it kept getting pushed back, pushed back. So initially, the project back in the late 80s was a full buildout. At the time, the owner, the Oz, just decided to build half the building and then the other half would come down the line sometime in the future. Here we are in the future and you'd like to build the other half, but consideration between sprinkler coach, just in and, and cost of materials, the building has shrunk from the full half being built out to basically a quarter or a third of what was proposed. So what, what we're asking for is, and basically anything in industrial zone needs a special permit site plan review to apply. I don't think there's anything in that industrial zone that would preclude a site plan review. But the activity that is doing there is allowed by zoning. It's, it's not out of the extraordinary. It's basically a storage facility where product comes in and product will go out. And this little addition is basically to facilitate that movement of product and help make it come in and out.
More warehouse work.
More efficient. So considering that the length of the projects have been going on, we've been trying to submit this plan. Probably I don't know if you can say it was that much easily developed or money. So I think we started back in October last year. But for whatever reason, we're here now today. And we would like to have site plan review process waived along with all the requirements in that site plan review process. As you can see from our plans that were submitted, we've done our storm calcs and the planning is prepared to install that stormwater management system. We're not increasing the impervious area. And we're not increasing the number of parking because I believe the employees are really staying the same. So basically that's it. I'm not sure if anyone wants to add anything to the project. If you want to know anything.
Yeah, I think we said a few things. We're actually decreasing the amount of water damage now because of additions control with piping. So we're the blacktop now, isn't it? Okay, originally we were going to do the half, but we needed sprinklers.
Sure.
Called town itself happy because there was talk about putting a water line on 202. I called the head guy because I don't know, he said there's no way that we can just book it up. So I said, okay, and we called. So that trapped that right down. So now we had to cut the building down. And in the other meeting, they said go to the building department. So I did, gave them money, permit, and all the plans. Then he said we had to go. So it kept going on and on and on. It's going on and on and on and costs it.
It turns all my thoughts.
So, so did I hear you correctly? The, the paving with sheet flows.
Correct.
Now the building's going to manage it and put it directly into the...
Correct.
Into the stormwater.
Correct, it's even less if we're improving.
So the downstairs, we hooked up to a, some type of pipe system.
Right.
Water dock has a pump in it because the water dock is large. So where the water goes into that water dock area, it's pumped out into the infiltration system.
Actually, that dock is standing where it is.
Right, but it's still all the water sheet flows into that water. There's a local water in that water dock.
Correct.
Pumped out.
Right.
Into the filtration system.
So like I said, we're actually decreasing the amount of water.
So the waivers you're asking for, are you asking for an approval of the entire site plan approval? Or pieces?
Basically, it's the entire site plan review. Because section 3.6 is the table, which requires that any industrial project come before a plan approval, site plan review, special permit site plan review. And again, this project taking so long because of the COVID issues and not being able to gather as a, I guess, in one committee, if you will. We're requesting that, and you can see the facilities that have been done. We are wanting to follow the plan because it really has no other choice but follow the plan. And I think it meets all the requirements of the site plan review process. Because I'm not even sure if you have that formal in front of you yet. Because I, I don't have a timestamp document from Kathy. So we have 65 days and a day of submission for you guys here. And then there's another period. So we're looking if we're to follow that guideline, we're into September, October. So.
Yeah, again, I, I'll reiterate, I don't, I don't see any problem with waiving. Seeing it was approved once. You're finally getting around to putting in another quarter of the, of the process. The, the site plan was, was completed, actually, the site plan was completed in the, in the, the original site plan approval. With the, and the only thing that's changing is now you're starting to put, put the building up.
Right, smaller building, yeah.
Smaller, but nonetheless, the site plan hasn't, isn't changing.
No, no, we're not changing the footprint.
We're not adding parking, we're not adding any...
Where the parking now or anything, all we're doing is taking the blacktop out and controlling that water where the building is, where it's not.
So the question we had asked before was, did this even need to come before us? Couldn't the building inspector just...
He could, but he's asking for us to, to waive it. He's asking something formal on his behalf to waive it.
Well, yeah, because he said the basis, he doesn't even have a life form there either. Here we are.
Well, it's in the, it's in the section 3.6, the table. Basically, every property in this town in industrial zone needs special permit site plan review. Which, to me, I didn't write it, but that, to me, that doesn't make sense. It's allowed by right.
There's a lot of things in our, our bylaws that we're trying to clean up a little at a time. And that's...
Yeah, if it's allowed by rights and all by law.
And this is, and this is a perfect case where we end up with these, these bylaws that hamstring each other, that in turn hamstrings the, the owner and the developer. Because the left hand doesn't know what the right hand is doing, i.e. planning board and building inspector.
Based on some of the bylaws that kind of conflict with each other. And we're slowly making some improvements.
Right.
It's, it's, but again, I'm in favor of waiving the site plan. It was already approved once. The site isn't changing. They're finally putting a, a quarter of the building up. To me, it's a moot point to even...
Well, can we, can we just do a site plan approval? And in that form, waiving the things that we need to waive?
We've already done a site plan approval for a larger building.
Yeah, the only thing that's changing is the building size. The parking staying the same. Everything staying the same.
The stormwater management.
Did we go ahead and issue a site plan approval for it?
We did.
Or did we just review it? I don't recall doing a site plan approval. That's, I'm just saying, you just say, oh, go ahead, forget it. Not sending a good precedent for anybody else.
No, no, no.
But if we, but if we could fill it into the form, waive these things.
I guess what I'm saying is the site plan has already been approved. It was approved when the building went up.
That's a long time ago, that was prior to this.
So, so they're not changing the site plan.
So it doesn't need to come to us? But Mr. Building Inspector has said, he thinks it should.
Because of the building, and because of the building that they're putting up. And they want to be sure, I guess he wants to be sure that we're okay with it. And I think we're okay with it, or at least I'm, I'm okay with it.
So if we did a letter then?
Yep.
Saying to the, to the building inspector and everybody else saying, you know, we have determined, or the board over there, the... This really, doesn't really...
Doesn't require a site plan, an additional site plan approval.
Right. And the board is fine with all, everything that was presented to us?
Well, I think that's what we're here to, to...
But, but a letter, some concrete thing saying, you know, what happened here? So that they can go forward, they can give that to the building inspector or whatever and say, here, okay, we got this, let's go.
That's what we're looking for.
And...
I, yeah, I agree, I agree with that. Not just to send them, not just to vote and send them away. We have to send a formal document to the building department to let them know that we've decided that site, site plan isn't required, a second site plan isn't required on this, on this side.
So we need to decide what we're gonna say on it. Get to create, get to pick up the letter for Jim DeSano. But we'll need to figure out what we're gonna say and we'll need to vote. So what are we gonna say?
The, the motion should sound, should, should say that after, after review of 8, what, was it 8 West, West State Street?
Yes.
An additional site plan is not required.
For this modification to the site?
Yeah. Do you have any motion? Ready to go?
I am almost. Okay, I'll make a motion. After review of the 8 West State Street property site plan. An additional, an additional site plan review is not necessary. Is that the way?
For the modifications.
For the mod, for the...
Modification.
Building modification.
The building modification, the propos, the proposed building modifications, additions, addition. Okay, Nita, could you read that back, please? I'm sorry.
Sorry. Um, the letter should include, after review of 8 State, West State Street, an additional site plan is not required by the planning board for the modifications being made to the site. Bob Sheehan made a motion, an additional site plan review is not necessary for the proposed building modifications. Then you said additions, but maybe it's...
So, so is actual...
Well, it's not actually modifications of the building. It is an additional...
For proposed building addition.
For proposed building addition. That sounds better. That's my motion.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. You're off, good luck.
So a letter...
We'll send the letter off.
A letter will...
Yeah, he'll give you the permit.
He'll also get it, he'll get it electronically, he'll get it, he'll have it by tomorrow.
Oh.
Well, no.
Well, I'll have to sign it, but he'll have it in the email.
Are you gonna be around to sign it?
Good point. I won't be, but you, you can sign on my behalf.
Can you, uh, I'm gonna have to sign that letter. Jim's not gonna be around. So as soon as Kathy gets it.
Right, so what you do is you make the letter in memo form. Right, and you sample before, if you've seen them, it's not gonna get it to you. From Bob's signature, from Bob's signature, send it to Kathy, copy that and then she'll print it off in the role and sign it.
Take care, gentlemen.
Is that how I do it?
That's right.
Okay, 17 New Logo Road.
I don't figure anybody here. Nobody on, online.
Nita, are you familiar with 17 New Logo?
The only thing we're trying to figure out is if we have enough information for Kathy to schedule a public hearing. That's all we're doing tonight.
I think we do. Ken?
Yeah, I think the hangup at the last, I don't know how many meetings ago it was, but the hangup was that the application was incomplete, it wasn't signed. And I think since then, it hasn't been.
Okay.
So I think the board should move to schedule a public hearing.
The only question I have is that the site plan says preliminary.
Does it say that on that copy there, Joe? Yes, it does say.
So, I mean...
Does that define what's...
It's not the final one, however, I think what you can do is ask the applicant to furnish one. I don't, I think, for whatever reason, they made this to the board. It shows what it means to. But you can have the applicant at the meeting either present a new one that says no, that doesn't say preliminary, or you, if you're, if the board would be so inclined to approve that, just say without preliminary.
Couldn't they just send, before the public hearing, they just send the, send us a one and that's the statement? Thinking somebody forgot to take the word preliminary off of there? It might be just as simple as that, but we don't know. And if we're approving something that says preliminary and then it gets changed at the end, then...
So do we have to make a motion on this to send it to Kathy to...
I don't know if the board has done that in the past.
No.
I think we, in the past, just the termination was made when the application arrived that it would be a public hearing. But I don't know if it necessarily came from a...
I would say, have you already sent Kathy a sample?
Yes, so yeah, so the public notice, my draft notice that I sent to Kathy.
Now, is this gonna be a joint one with the ZDA? Because according to the building inspector, it needs a special permitted site plan approval.
I think there was a, there was a, a later correspondence that suggested it was just...
Was that when the question of residential versus industrial wasn't quite ironed out? Okay. And now it's...
This is dated March 22nd, this is the last one I have, unless I missed it, from the zoning and code development center.
Yeah, he stated that it was in an industrial section of the property.
Yeah, there was a, there was a note that, I don't have it with me, but a note that suggested after a closer review of the boundary, which is, it's shown here on the site plan, that only required a site plan approval rather than a joint or a ZDA special plan.
Okay, so we don't need a joint? And Ken, are you willing to give us your...
Yeah.
Review of this? I'm asking him to do something, he doesn't have a... And the application needs to be dated.
What's that mean?
Although this particular one that, that says special permitted site plan approval doesn't have a spot for me. But the other one they sent that was handwritten, that they first reviewed, does have a spot, but you're going to build one. So if you want one that's eligible, you can go with the latest one. Just something of note. If we're going with this one, then there isn't any spot for them to put data.
Why are there two versions out there?
Pardon?
Why are there two versions?
This is special permit and site plan approval. And this other one, I believe, is just special.
So I found a memo from Greg Riggs that was submitted on April 7. And it says states, given the much clearer map of property line delineation supplied by the applicant, Mr. Ames of Northeast Paving, as compared to the zoning district information available, the site infrastructure is clearly in, in the industrial... available, the site infrastructure is clearly in, in the industrial zone area. Therefore, it means a partier for industrial use and does not require a special permit or variance from the ZVA. You may have to proceed to the planning of the site plan approval." Um, I think the application... And it seems as if the applicant has already submitted a letters list, and the...
Man, what's the, that's a, a lot of letters. That's okay, I can back track here.
Yeah, this one is not dated, the site plan approval, but I would suggest that based on the, um, receiving of it from Kathy, sort of regards to the updated information, that should start the, the time, the six, the fact days from that to, to secure it.
We have to go, I'm sorry.
The plans there?
Jim has a set of plans, yes. So we've gotta go through the public hearing process for this.
Based on your zoning bylaw?
Yeah.
Site plan approval, um, you know, and I, I think the board has made comments about site plan approval and whether or not that belongs in a, um, you know, a publicly know ofied type of very specific process, um, but as far as the zoning bylaw, the challenge relies on chapter 48A for the process, so that would require the environmental applications and newspaper, all of that.
So the board may wanna discuss at some point changing that, because, because what it's doing is, what's, what's the sense of having, it's by right.
It...
It's allowed by right. Why would you have a special permit?
No, it's just site plan.
And, and why not just site plan? Otherwise, what's the difference?
Because that's what we're doing, is just site plan. We're not doing special permit now.
Yeah, it's, it's the procedure, I think, that the question, that's the question.
Right.
But right now, we're probably on mastermind.
Right.
So, we have to...
Again, this is another one that was just similar to the last one. They're basically putting a tent up over their, their product.
Right. The issue was, we're delaying to any way of, or...
Right. And, and that... Which has indeed been spelled out.
Yeah, and, and that can all be clarified and, and vetted through a site plan review, not a special permit.
Right.
And I'm just saying, we may wanna consider changing that and clean, cleaning that up. Ken, you may, you may wanna make note of that, so that when we're looking at taking another...
Another run at the bylaws?
Another run at the bylaws, if that's one of the things we, we take a look at.
Okay, so, Ken, you're gonna send it off to Kathy?
Yeah.
To get the process going?
Yeah.
With the request that the applicant remove preliminary from the plan?
If it is in fact not preliminary.
Yeah, I'll just ask...
I wanna tell him, you know, I wanna say, "Remove it," and it's, and it really is preliminary, um, we're telling him what to do, then...
Well, I think it's the clarification whether or not this is the most up-to-date site plan.
Mm-hmm.
But, um...
My guess is they, they put preliminary on there in case we wanted to make, in case we made changes to...
But then they could've made a simple revision in the title box, saying it had been revised such and such a date. Okay.
Um, we're good with that? Seventeen New Ludlow Road?
It probably would be scheduled for the second meeting in July. Didn't forget the notice in this.
What, what's that?
Second week, second meeting in July, should be.
Oh, on the, um...
For the public hearing.
Okay.
Uh, before we go on to this other rudimentary stuff, I've got a procedural question. When the agenda came out on Friday, I believe it was, and maybe it was on Thursday, and Jim, uh, made the comment to, uh, uh, put on the agenda, eight West State Street, another one came out. And then after that, we received these A and Rs from the LeFlam family. Procedurally, can we move forward in reviewing these, since they're not on the agenda?
They are.
They are?
They're on the agenda, I have.
There was an updated agenda that Kathy sent out.
It's under new business.
New business, I have an absolute blank.
Oh.
Yeah. When she left me...
And Nita has a blank. Okay.
Okay, so the ones that Kathy...
Wait a minute. Nope, these?
All of the ones?
All have blanks under new business. Well, well, well. Okay. Well, so be it. Let's do the, uh...
Now, Dakota, are you online here?
I am.
Okay, are you here to talk about the LeFlam?
Yeah.
Okay, my question, my, first off, my question is, I don't have anything from, in writing, saying they've authorized me to do this, so, you have some...
Well, after, after you've given all of the, you, I'm just, I wanna be able to answer questions.
Okay. Okay. Has everybody had a chance to review? I have questions, I don't wanna just kind of barter in here, but I can.
Morgan East Cell.
Oh, I know where those are.
There's Jennifer Drive.
Yeah, I know exactly where they're at. Solar Fields back here.
So be to the east of, uh, the solar.
Correct. I should probably...
That was one of my questions, was it in relation to the solar, or is it the, uh...
I'm gonna recuse myself. I'm gonna butter.
Okay. Hey, Bob?
Okay. Uh, are you familiar with this, Nita?
No.
Jason? We've, uh, four lots that are being proposed for approval not required. Uh, here's Morgan Street, East Street, Jennifer Drive, the solar area is here, the shaded lots are the ones that are being proposed. Have you seen this, Ken?
I, uh, I printed it, and I have, and I'm just working on the application.
Um, my question, one of my questions is, is this still, is this chapter 61A land?
I thought I saw some paperwork come through via email that, uh, they were requesting it being removed from 61A?
The stuff that Kathy said, but it was only for the fiscal year, beginning July 1, 2019. There's nothing after that. I talked to Carrie Anne...
Yeah.
In the assessor's office, and it's confusing, but she said the 29 acres was put into residential for the solar, and actually 29.33. 25.57 is what they actually used, and so they're kind of short. The question becomes, is that land that these are on, is that in 61A, or in fact, did all of it get turned into residential?
When they did the solar?
Right.
Or when they took the solar piece out?
Right, and she couldn't give me a definitive answer. She said it looked like some of it, a piece of it is not, is still in 61A, but I think that should get verified before anything, and that and the application is not taken. And, that's all I have.
Are you hearing all this, Dakota?
I'm not.
Some.
Okay.
What did you hear? Have we heard of that?
Well, it was just a, a bad echo between everyone talking, but I, I'm going, I think that was, um, what was actually taken out of 61A, is that correct?
Yes, we need a clarification on what was, if all of that land that these lots are gonna be on was taken out of 61A. There's a question, uh, from my conversation with Carrie Anne on the assessor's office, that, um, some of it may not, may still be in 61A, the rest of it, yes, up in residential. Um, but she was gonna look into it a little more, we didn't have time to do that, and the AR needs to be dated. It's not dated. Other than that, I think the lots, the way they are, pass everything that's required. And Bob is shaking, he said.
I agree.
Does that make sense, Dakota?
Yes, it would, yeah.
So we're gonna wait, if I'm understanding this correctly, we're gonna wait for verification from the assessor's office that this property is indeed out of 61A.
All of it.
All of it. We are also gonna wait for a, a dated document.
That's it.
And hopefully we can take, and hopefully we can take care of this at the next meeting.
What, the general, the not dated, the actual?
The actual application. That came with the, um, my laws and all that. You got it there, Jason?
Yeah.
It's not dated, not the complex.
Right.
So, they could just apply to see Kathy and, um...
When the, does this...
So, we don't wanna do that, that would be legally...
Right.
Something we wouldn't...
Well, we still have to wait regardless.
Right, for the clarification.
Right.
We have to wait for the clarification on the 61A amendment.
And has a check been received? Do we know that?
Yes, I need, uh...
Oh, I see it. Never mind, I'm sorry. Yep.
So it'd be five, 125.
Right. So the check is sufficient?
The check is for how much?
Five hundred.
Five hundred. One lot is becoming five.
Right. So we've got four new lots, changing an existing lot, so that's five.
Right, so we're short 125, 125 dollars, Dakota, on the, um, month. Did you understand why?
So, did you have any 225 dollars or a lot that you're selling?
Well, yes, because it was one lot, now it's gonna be actually five. You got your four lots, and then what's left of that?
I'm sure. Harry's required, uh, I think that was, I'm hoping, they said, uh, 100 would be sufficient to, uh, uh, what's the total?
Okay. Why don't you confess one?
No problem.
And then we can take this up at the next, uh, meeting.
So, we're agreeing, can I thank you from Carrie Anne, and also, um, give the additional 125 dollar check, and the application due on the public hearing?
Correction.
Well, we're quick to say that this is gonna get taken care of at the next meeting. It depends on the assessor's office.
Right, as long as we have all the answers, we can take care of it at the next meeting. You got the application in there?
I will.
Regrettably. Okay, so how's everybody feel about the workshops, about discussing some of those zoning changes?
were discussing the zone changes and everything, uh, it was quite obvious that everybody at that meeting was against any of the zone changes. There was, I don't...
For East Street.
For, for East New Ludlow, yes, for East Street, Pleasant Barton. Uh, there was very few that were in favor of the, uh, of outdoor venue. I don't know if we should even waste our time and move forward on what the original proposals were.
So you're suggesting we start from scratch? Or...
I, I'm suggesting that we don't waste our time with at least the East Street Barton, uh, Pleasant Street, uh, to the town line. Uh, the outdoor venues, it, I don't know.
I don't recall a lot of, um, oppositions to the outdoor venues, just clarification as, does this mean if I'm gonna have graduation parties, I need to get a permit or something like that? I think they were confused as to that.
Well, I mean, if we wanted, I have no problem discussing that particular aspect further.
What else do we have?
For the workshop?
I think that was it.
No, I thought there was something else.
The other one we, we sent to town meeting, it was passed, which is a candidate's.
Yes, I, I knew that.
So Ken, that's all we had, right?
We had the zone, the zone changes, the boundary changes, we had the open menu.
We had the industrial area, Morgan Street, New Ludlow Road.
That's about the most.
That got a lot of opposition as well. I think we were a little aggressive on the zone change in the Morgan Street area to come up so close to the Morgan Street properties, and that, and I, and I really don't wanna do this, I don't think. That last parcel in Granby on the southerly side of New Ludlow Road, I, I don't know if we necessarily want a spots on that, but it's right across from the old landfill, it's as well as the blacktop plant. And that's originally what was requested to be changed, was that particular parcel.
Correct.
And that, that request came from the select... And that, that request came from the select board.
Correct.
So did, so did East Street. That came, that came from the select board slash the economic development committee on the East Street section to Ludlow.
The board also reviewed the, the private arise.
That was the other one.
Right. Writing, and Kathy Monnet, we're on her, chair of the ZBA. I think she, she spoke her piece and I.
Yeah, she wasn't against it.
No.
She was, she, she thought maybe, we threw, we threw a number out there, but she brought it, she thought maybe fifteen hundred or two thousand would be more palatable.
Oh, that's right, yes.
But she also said she didn't feel like we were getting that many of them, or we couldn't handle them as.
Yeah.
As it is, stands.
The way it stands now.
So the question would be, do we even want to change it?
I'll throw that out to the board with their thoughts around it. We haven't denied one.
No.
No, we have not. Almost got into that situation potentially, but ZBA did it for us.
Yes.
Yeah, that had other circumstances.
There's a lot of extenuating circumstances.
I'm fine with leaving it, you know, leaving it the way it is, I just thought that some, some of these would be, would be helpful as we're getting busier and busier. You know, is to make some of these things a little bit easier for us to manage and get them through. And it, and the other, the other part of it was, and then I'll give you the floor, was that, you know, if someone wants to put up a thirteen hundred or fourteen hundred car or building, we're making them go through a whole hearing process, which, you know, that's, it's not inexpensive to do that.
Yeah. I, I think what the town as a whole really has to focus on is infrastructure. Sewer water. And until we have those, and that's what we heard at the last, oh, help me out, the master plan meeting, everybody was all for, you know, bring some sort of an infrastructure, or more of an infrastructure. It seems like we get going on it and then all of a sudden things get canceled. I remember a number of years ago, we've got sewer up to Fins Hill, and there were some, there was some substantial grant money, I believe, available. And a committee was put together that worked rather diligently to try to get the sewers all the way to, almost to Belcher Town. And to also include West Street, pick up the West Street School, that's back when West Street School was still functioning, and along in front of the highway department. And it never made the warrant, because there were other items that powers to be.
They had a USDA bond.
That was more important at the time.
At the time, yeah.
So it's a dummy.
Right.
That's a shame.
It is. What would be nice is if we ever get the planner, and we, if, somebody's searching for, for monies that might be available.
I know on the economic development board, we've talked with the assessors about incentives to bring business to town.
Mm-hmm.
And not all business requires the utilities that we're talking about. Dollar General, those types of, small box stores don't require. CVS would have been nice if they had it, had water there, because, you know, they wouldn't have had to put in an expensive sprinkler system. I'm still in favor of running, you know, running it up to 202 corridor to capitalize on some, maybe some other businesses, but.
Well, and we've got a couple of other options too, where Chicopee was going to let the town of Granby tie in on New Ludlow Road to their sewer. They may even offer that through water. We've got District Two in South Hadley, where if we came in West Street or, I'm not sure how, the boundary lines of the two districts are, but we can also come in another way. And then it's, there's water right up on Route 116. And the sewer is right now at Fins Hill. And if this paving project marches forward in the phases that they're prescribed in, if we don't do it soon, we're going to be out of luck for, what is it, a five-year no cut? On the new pavement?
And how's the second one?
Sure.
But that's up to the select board.
Yeah.
So, no workshops or?
I'll leave that up to the remainder of the board.
What are your thoughts, sir?
I'm thinking we could go forward with the venue. But there was so much opposition to everything else that. And they, they suggested a traffic study. And they suggested waiting until everybody can get together, and I don't think you have a little bit enough for that. Because there are so many upset people in that whole area. They don't want any more traffic. It's too busy, they're already.
Nita, do you have any thoughts on it?
I agree with what Leland was saying. That, I feel like that I, even though I wasn't part of the board at the time, I could watch that hearing and I think people are just too upset, especially off the traffic issue.
Yeah, I kind of agree, I think as far as the reselling part, I think that on hold. But maybe we look at the outdoor venue, I'm all for that. And I'm also for looking at upsizing the garages as well. You know, that's something that we want to discuss, I don't know what everyone else feels about that, or do you want to just leave that alone for now?
I, I would just leave the, the size of garage sizes as they are for now. And see if we can get it up.
Chicken now?
You're not going to get much now with the lumber and everything, right?
Right, right.
So, for another year or two? So, just a workshop for the venue?
I don't know, I think we just put it on our next agenda, unless we get buried with other items.
Yeah, we won't have the public hearing on the next one.
When does the town plan on having another meeting?
I don't know, another, yeah, I mean, with their bylaws that they're trying to push through, I know they're.
Yeah, what, that, that guy.
They, they're postponed indefinitely. So I don't think they have anything planned.
If I can make a suggestion, I don't think we need to look at a calendar. I don't think we got a, we can be pushed into a corner with a firm date. I think we have to move forward with what we can do. And if we make the next date, we make it, if we don't, we don't. Because that's kind of what happened with the zoning changes. We, we tried to move quickly, as you had said. And we, I guess we really didn't have all our i's dotted and t's crossed.
Well, you're right, and, and that's why you have a hearing.
Mm-hmm.
So that, so that you can solicit information and, and get people's thoughts. The process is there, but to do it, to make, to make that meeting was, we were rushing. And that's, and that's why we pretty much mixed everything at that, at that time. But what I'm talking about is, is this particular item for the venues, we, we kind of need to know when there's, when there's going to be a town meeting, so we don't schedule a hearing too far in front of it. Because we've got, it's got to be within six months, I believe, if that's on right?
Yeah, six months after we have the public hearing, right?
Yeah, it has to be within the six months.
Well, we can do the initial groundwork and have that lined up and ready to go.
Yeah, look at it and look at what questions people have.
Yeah.
For what we've got and what they have, and we may not need to do much changes at all.
Right, then we can just bring it forward when we know, when the next.
I can check with Kathy and see if she has anything, like, they might be having another town meeting.
Are there any other ways that we can inform the public ahead of time? Or just do it through the, invite them to our, our, if we're going to do a work session on it? I know it's all posted, but.
And I would imagine we're going to get kind of busy. Our master plan must be coming up about ready to put together.
So you had your update, you had a land use update in 2016. Your last, your master plan was in 2008, so that was your first investment. Yeah, I mean, your first.
No, there was another master plan after that.
2016?
We only did one chapter of it.
It was just a land use chapter, unless you work with another.
Well, no, Larry, Larry was the rep.
Yeah, from what I was able to review, yeah, I think the town did a land use update in 2016. That's what changed your mixed use bylaw, or you introduced that. But prior to that, it was 2008, we had all of the other ones. So, I mean, yeah, you're due for an update in looking at that. I think the planning board, as it has been, and has been responsive to the other committees in town in suggesting, you know, zone changes and whatnot, reviewing some of the strategies that you populated your master plan, who've been moving towards, you know, little by little. I think maybe just looking at and seeing where the town is with regards to some of those strategies, maybe just like dusting it off and seeing where you guys are and at least address any changes that may need to happen, or, you know, whether or not it still needs to happen after, you know, the board can look at the other committees, but I know that also the DOTA request that the planning board put together at the end of last year, a zoning bylaw review is probably also worthwhile. You know, a big, other than this, the PC demo review that we happened in over the past two years.
So you're saying zoning bylaw and the master plan would be big projects we should be?
Well, I mean, the master plan, you know, best practice is looking at it after ten years, seeing where you are. You've obviously looked at the land use element five years ago, has much changed. I think the reports, the mixed use report suggests that there hasn't been any mixed use development, but we've also been looking at sewer water expansion, and that hasn't been successful. So, there are obviously circumstances to not necessarily lead to a thriving mixed use environment. But, that doesn't say that, you know, the board can't review the recommendations and see where it is, and if they want to respond to that, you know.
Well, why don't we talk about the outdoor venues at the next meeting, as you suggested? And we'll move forward.
Okay.
There's one other thing, I want to go back half a step. I said water coming from Chicopee. That would be redundant in the fact that we already have water from South Hadley along that New Ludlow East Street corridor. So.
We have it down Morgan Street, halfway down Morgan Street.
Right.
Three quarters of the way down Morgan Street.
So water is available in that area, but I don't know how the contractor is supposed to be arranged with Granby entering the quabin, if you will, through the legislation and whatever agreement Granby had, potentially lined up with South Hadley District one. And I, I guess that's all, that's all off the table now, isn't it?
I think so.
Just a bit.
So, at our next meeting, we're going to be, review the.
Venues.
Venue bylaws, proposed annual bylaws.
Yeah, I'll send the board.
Yeah, can you, can you dust off some of those?
Yeah, there were some examples that I provided.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can.
And that's our only big thing. Kathy's on vacation starting Wednesday. And will not be back until the twelfth, which is on our next meetings. But she can post it, just to make sure we've got it straight on the agenda.
So Kathy, Kathy's in the office tomorrow?
Yes, that's it.
That's it, so that letter has to get to her.
Tonight or?
Yeah, tonight, and I'll go down first thing in the morning and, and sign it. Okay, it can be done in the, early in the morning. I'm not going to be down there because town office doesn't open until nine.
Kathy's at seven thirty.
She doesn't open up, well, if she doesn't answer the phones, or opens up before, before nine.
Yeah.
Typically. So, okay. Do we have any action items we want to review?
You have the list there, or you have my list?
I have your list.
This, minutes. I think it was.
There's my list on the back.
Yeah, on the very last page, what do you have there?
On the back of that last piece of paper.
Review action items. Send letter to select board with board's recommendations for pioneering valid PC representatives and alter.
We have to be loud from the.
Make an appointment with Kathy Leonard to sign the amended site plan approval for 121 West State Street. The board.
The board, yeah.
Done?
Done.
Done. Yeah, the, the create and send board's response to Chris Martin regarding food trucks.
I thought we did that.
And I, and I think, I think that got mixed by them anyway.
Yeah.
They decided not to do it.
Oh, they did? Oh.
Create a spreadsheet, a spreadsheet for PB, PC charges, William.
On the board.
Keep track of items to submit to town annual report.
On the board.
That's about it?
Uh, prepare an amended site plan approval for 121 West State Street. Ken?
That was done, completed, completed, completed.
Completed, 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 completed.
Are you in the completed list?
Yeah.
Okay.
All completed.
If I may, the board should be aware that I believe PV PC is working with the town on some grant, MBE grant for some regulatory things.
For stormwater?
Stormwater.
Yeah, they are.
Yeah, and Patty.
Patty said they got an extension?
Yes. There, there is some work that the board will probably need to look to review, I think that's regarding their floodplain bylaw. So the state has a new model floodplain bylaw, and what I've been doing for some of the planning boards is to look at their current floodplain bylaw and see where there may need to be some amendments. And it's not necessarily amendments to any of the restrictions or anything like that. It's literally amendments to address new information, how information is shared with the state. If you have a change in floodplain, go through that process and just ensuring, just a revamp of the language, updated language. So that's not a missing thing that we need to start thinking about.
You want to put that on the next agenda or tell the board?
Well, what do we need?
It's not ready yet, the board.
The bylaw is, the law of bylaw is out there, and I worked with the town of Hadley and they adopted their amendment. The, the thing that the town will need to be aware of is the state is working on, FEMA is working on new floodplain maps, and those are supposed to be done by 2023. And by that point, the board, all of the towns should have adopted that language in the language to address the matchings. So I think at the very least, what I can do, if you have issues with the headquarter, is just share with the board some resources regarding the novel floodplain bylaw and some expertise, and, you know, should the board want to think about it.
And do we have to wait for feedback from Dave Baroosh or?
Remember, that's a DOTA, the planning board's, its thing before. It was supposed to have been just passed June, but they got an extension.
That's for, no, that's for the MBE. It's not the DOTA, yes. And that is, my understanding, and I can check with Patty, was that the brand does not include an update to the floodplain bylaw that I was...
I thought we were kind of waiting for that, all that to be done, so we knew what to improve in a, in a bylaw or update what we have. Not that was the whole intention from the beginning.
Maybe we can get some clarification, but I think, I think that there is, there's, they're coming from on separate tracks. Because the floodplain bylaw is nested within their zoning bylaw, and the MS four is to basically ensure compliance with the, the new general permit for...
So we don't have to wait for them to finish?
I don't think so, but I mean, it's, like, it might be helpful just for the process of procedure. The thing is, the, the town doesn't need to adapt until the maps are done, but I just wanted to put it in, you know, into the planning boards, at least I find, of things that you have.
So when do we want to start talking? You can send us the information, what you have now, and we can at least be aware of it.
I don't think it's going to be a big haul. It's, you know, it's, you need to comply or you lose your, what's the word? Their FEMA regulation, so it's, you know, anything that has a policy, we just need to show to FEMA or MEMA that you comply, that the town complies with the new bylaw. So we'll navigate through, you know, any language change. I, I think it's minimal at most. But I think that's a conversation for another day.
We could add it to the next agenda just to be, to kind of start talking about it? And then, because that's going to have to go to the town meeting?
I hate to see that get lost under old business, though.
Do you want to wait?
I do.
Till...
Until we have better clarification on what's going on and...
Yeah, I think that's probably, you know, we can, before the next week, I can see where the town is with regards to the work with Patty and see from there. The thing is, we can, we can maybe look at this if the town is not having, we don't need to do it in a special town meeting this fall, we can look at it for the, this next, if we want to.
For next year, maybe?
Yeah.
Okay, so then, okay, so that does not have to be on the agenda for tomorrow? For tomorrow, the next one? Or not being, or anybody can. So, review of proposed venue bylaws, about the only thing we have for the next meeting.
Well, you have that.
And the A and R for the plan. And that's it. Okay. Because we took care of all the others.
We can have it, we'll have a hearing.
Not at the next meeting.
The second, okay. Okay. Anything else? Anybody else have anything?
Make motion to adjourn?
We have a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.